Can you all still hear me?
Yep.
All right.
This meeting is now streaming on YouTube. This will be your side.
Do you like to watch yourself, Matt, while you're performing?
No. It's only for you, Ethan, that I actually turn on the video camera after 5:00 P. M. Then nobody else is going to get that.
Anita does not have the link.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, but let me minimize this and I'll send it to her.
Where is Jeannie been?
Jeannie is not taking part in these. We're trying to use people's time more efficiently. Jeannie works not full-time for the town.
Yep.
So, you know, we gotta manage that stuff.
Is she gonna be taking part in the ones where we're actually reviewing applications or?
Yeah, I'm certain. Yep. And needed when we do hearings and things like that, for sure.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
As long as she's here when we need to do rum cake, it's okay.
Yes. And I'm certain she's probably watching this at home.
Hi, Jeannie.
That changes everything.
Does.
I would have shaved if I had known. Like, yeah, Ethan.
That's why I did shave.
Well, thank you.
Well, look at Chris O setting the bar. Well, you know, now I'm official. I gotta look good, right?
Oh, did you get sworn in?
Yeah.
So, and Anita got sworn in today, too. So that's good. And Andrew, Andrew, Andy, right?
Yep.
Andy, you got sworn in the other day, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Well, perfect.
Did the agenda come from you, Jeremy, or is it?
Jeannie.
Jeannie, okay.
Last, end of last week.
You know what maybe I should do is try to send everyone a, I'm sorry, I've been out straight with transitioning with Rosie into the office and it's just been, we've been getting caught up to everything. There she is. It's been a long road without a code officer for four months. So we're finally caught up.
Hey, Jeremy?
Yes.
Isn't there one other person we're waiting for besides Chris O, Andy and Anita that's new?
Pat, Pat could not join us today.
Oh, okay.
She sent an email around earlier. So hello, Anita.
Thanks for the link, Jeremy. I have no idea where it was.
You know what I, you know, I finally, after all these months of doing this, I think it's important when you get the link to accept it because then it goes to your calendar and you can't lose it.
That's why I couldn't find it. It was in my calendar and not my inbox.
Yeah, see.
I have to open the calendar. Yeah.
All right.
That's what the problem was.
So we're live on YouTube right now. And this is the Camden Planning Board meeting for Thursday, February 4th, 2021. This is just a workshop. There are no official actions being taken today, really. No site plan applications, nothing like that. Just for everyone else out there, we're on Zoom. We do take comments on our YouTube channel. We also encourage everyone to, if they have comments or concerns or questions on the planning board, to email them to myself at jmartin@camdenmain.gov and I'll bring them to the board. With that said, I could go through the agenda really quick. We're gonna elect officers, hopefully today, Chair and Vice Chair. Everyone's been sworn in. So that's good. And we're gonna chat. Second item would be proposed or possible zoning ordinance amendments. And three would be comprehensive plan discussion. And then following that would be next steps or meeting dates that are coming forward. I, I will say that we do have a site, I mentioned it the other day. We do have a zoning amendment that someone is proposing and they've submitted almost complete application on it. So at the next planning board meeting, we'll probably be hearing at least a preliminary proposal on a zoning amendment for the town. That was, that's instituted by a property owner. And property owners, people have the right to initiate zoning amendments. And then they go to you folks and we move forward with them or without them. That said, we can start with the election of chairs. And Chris O is a, as a full-time member, Ethan, Matt, Anita and Mark can vote on, on this. So I would let you guys take it from here and I can help run, I'll run the kind of the rest of the meeting if you don't mind. Someone can make a motion or have a, however you want to do this.
I would.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to nominate Ethan for Chair and Matt as Vice Chair.
Second.
We got a second from Chris O. Any discussion about that? You guys okay?
I see what you did there, Mark.
You know, it's what they call the silver fox.
Early bird gets the worm.
Yeah. Well, I don't know you folks well enough to make a decision on this, so I'm afraid that.
You haven't watched all the old planning board videos, Anita?
It's must-see TV.
Yeah, I bet.
Well, maybe it's appropriate that there's discussion, just part of that might be just introduction. So if there were extensions or.
Background.
Yeah, that would be based on the information that was provided.
Go ahead.
Yeah. You, don't you have, how many new members do you have to the board in addition to myself?
There's a total of four new members and three existing members. Ethan, Matt and Mark have been on the board. Mark's been here the longest. And I don't remember if it's Ethan and Matt came on about the same time.
That's about right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, again, I say, I have, I haven't seen you in action, so.
So I will, I will say they, you know, we've, this board, the three of you guys have worked on zoning amendments, map amendments, site plan applications, some subdivision amendments. Those are things that all, all three of these have reviewed. You know, I think it's, my perspective, it's a good Chair-Vice Chair combo. That's just me.
Great. Do you want to say a few words? Because you also came from zoning board of appeals, which is something maybe helpful for folks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where I, am I muted? No, that's where I did, I did serve on the zoning board of appeals for a while first. I, I feel like my, one of my contributions to the, to the meetings are from the wings is, as making motions, but if somebody's willing to fill that void, I'm, I'm willing to serve as, as Chair and, and, and do that. So as long as we have, I don't want to be the only one talking during the meetings is essentially where I'm at.
Well, you know what I see in being a Chair, it's, it's important to be able to multitask and keep the meetings flowing efficiently.
Yeah.
That's, that's really why I nominated Ethan and Matt.
Okay.
Because I think they can do it.
Excuse my, excuse my ignorance. Sorry.
After you, Anita.
Who has been Chair? Has it been Mark?
Rosie.
Rosie, who just went off.
Oh, Rosie has been Chair, okay.
Yeah.
And Jeff Senders was the.
Vice Chair.
So we lost the top two, the officers.
So Anita, to your question, and I would also piggyback off of Mark to say that Ethan would be in a position to organize us well, to keep us running in an efficient manner in terms of his organization skills, in terms of the communication skills. And I think that would be a benefit. I will step up, Ethan, and start making motions just for you. But keeping aside, Anita, the idea is to find balance. And I think we had that previously in the board, which was lovely in terms of who played which role. So it wasn't necessarily one person dominating the board. And I hope that we will be able to continue that trend and that philosophy in terms of how the board would operate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can definitely say for, for my part, I value all the opinions of the board members. And everybody has different walks of life, experience and different focus and looking for collaborative process. We've done really well so far in the time that I've been on the board. Even when we have disagreements, hearing each other out and coming to some sort of consensus. And I think we're fortunate to have Jeremy and his input. He helps guide us to our, to the points that we need to focus on. And Jeannie is always there to back us up. She's not here right now, but she's been fantastic. Keeping us on track with the intricacies of running a meeting and all that. And I will, it will be a learning process for me, but I'm happy to step in if that's the will of the board.
Okay.
Perfect. I will say, Ethan, I think your background too, you know, I think is a, is a good, great asset. And as far as some of those intricacies of the board, we do prepare cheat sheets for the Chair from time to time.
I'll be relying on those.
Thank. All right.
Good to. Any other questions, Anita, while we're starting again, going through the process and the floor is open?
Um, sure. Just, just give me an idea of how long you, Matt and Ethan have been active on the planning board. And Ethan, you can count your Board of Appeals.
Ethan, you want to start us off?
I'm trying to remember. We came on right around the time, Jeremy, wasn't it when you started?
Yeah, right after.
Yeah. So that's how long, a couple of years?
Three.
Three, three years. Yeah, time flies by. And so before that, I was on the Board of Appeals probably for a year and a half or so.
Okay.
And Anita, I've lived in Camden for 30 years and been on the board for.
For how many, sorry?
I've been in Camden for 30 years and I've been on the board for three as well, just the same as Jeremy.
Good. Thank you.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. You guys ready to do a vote? And you gotta go by roll call. So maybe Ethan, maybe this can be your first.
Roll call vote.
Call vote.
Okay. All in favor of?
Roll call means you have to call everybody.
Roll call, you gotta under Zoom, Zoom regulations.
I was gonna, I was gonna go individually. I should have said all in favor, but I'll go around the room. The motion on the table is to nominate myself, Ethan Shaw as Chair and Matt Siegel as Vice Chair, performed by Mark Segenthaler. And I'll go around. Mark, your vote is?
Yay.
And Anita? That's a yay. Chris O?
Aye.
Are we gonna have Andy? Are you sworn in, Andy?
He's sworn in, but he's an alternate. So
Yeah.
We don't need him to vote today.
Well, we'll assume his consent by silence.
Well, we do, because that would make five.
Uh, well.
Never mind. No, I counted wrong.
Yep. And Matt?
Aye.
Okay. And myself, I guess I will say aye.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And thank you. And congratulations, Ethan. I look forward to working with you on our new board.
And congratulations to you as well, Matt. And thank you.
All right.
Smith, welcome, Andy Smith.
Thank you, Matt.
Ethan, do you want to take over the meeting or you want me to just kind of let this roll? I was gonna discuss, kind of pick up from the last conversation. I took a lot of what you all had to say to heart. And I did. I'm sorry it took so long, but I sent a web-based map. I will say this is a fantastic resource that we're getting from Knox County right now.
Yeah, I took a look at it. I'm, I'm looking at it now. Yeah, I'm happy to turn the meeting over to you. I just wanted to emphasize again, particularly, I know Pat's not here, but Andy, we definitely value your participation in the meeting as an alternate. And anything that you have to say is going to be weighed by the board with equal weight, even if you're not a voting member. So, you know, just feel free to jump in on anything and bring your expertise to bear. We'd love to have it. So, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ethan.
And Jeremy, as far as the rest, I guess there's no need to open any public hearing or anything. We're just having a discussion here. So I'll just go ahead and turn it over to you to steward this one and
Perfect.
Time in as we can.
Yeah, thank you. So just to recap from where we were last, last meeting, in an attempt to try to work on some housing availability issues. Everyone knows, again, from, you can go Kettering to Bar Harbor, housing's an issue on the coast. There's no question about it. It's impacting workforce. I was on a, a Zoom with the Camden area business group yesterday and the Department Labor gentleman was involved and you know, that workforce, not just housing, but workforce, getting people here to work is a challenge and it's a priority. So big picture, and it's identified in the comp plan as an issue. And we're gonna talk comp plan later. But we really need to start looking at ways we can kind of increase housing availability and affordability. And one ways that communities do that is through increasing density. That helps reducing lot size when appropriate, and that helps. So one of the initial things was I was bringing forward was to, in the Village Extension District, right now, we have lot requirement for non-seward lots of 100 feet of frontage or 150. And, and 40,000 square feet of lot size for non-seward lots. What I was proposing to reduce the frontage requirement to what's required to 75 feet and a 20,000 square foot lot size in the Village Extension, that's a half acre. Just under a half acre. We talked about it at great length, and I think the conversation went in all sorts of different directions. About having a kind of a, maybe taking a step back, having a holistic kind of plan, looking at all of our zoning densities. Airbnb and short-term rentals came up in that discussion. You know, we don't want to do something that will have some, you know, negative consequences or things that we weren't planning for. So I get it and I appreciate the thoughts that you all had. I'm still an advocate for 20,000 square foot lots in, in the Village Extension. I don't think there's a rush to do it. So we can, obviously, have plenty of discussion on it. What I, and what you, what I said I was gonna get to you all was a map and, and Leticia, I don't remember her last name exactly. And Van Huesen or Van Huesen. She's a GIS analyst, if you will, for Knox County. Knox County is starting to do a little more outreach within the municipalities in Knox County, provide more resources and more services. T C is fantastic GIS person, and she's created the maps for us, for me on a number of occasions, but she's got this new ability with these web-based maps. And we're gonna try to, she's gonna work on providing these more regionally. The coast of Maine is in desperate need of, in this area of regional planning help. What we do in Camden may be good for Camden, but we gotta look at a lot of these things from a planning perspective regionally. And I think that came up of, in our conversation even about, you know, where do we have commercial development? Is it in Camden or is it in the region? Where do we have housing development? Is it in Camden or is it in the region or is it both? These are all questions that we should be talking about. So I'm gonna share my screen, if I can find this right here. So this is a web-based map that I asked Leticia to, to do. And what we, and I'll show you, there's, this is how it's available. Everyone has this link. I can put it on the town's website. Again, this is only for discussion and planning purposes only. And it starts off right, right from the front. It says this, what this viewer depicts. And this is Camden V zones that potentially need a non-seward criteria to split, going from 40,000 down to 20,000 and from 150 to 75. And so that's what that is. And so if you look at this, does everyone see this map?
Yes.
Perfect. Whoa, sorry. Let me get used to my, my, my thing here. This is when I like a mouse. So if you see everything in white, right, that's all the Village Extension. And I haven't played with this enough, but I've also sent you a sewer, sewer map. So, and that's kind of all this area is sewed. This area in here is sewed. And then what we also, I asked her to exclude because I don't want to get in, go down the road of altering shoreline zoning, lot size requirements at all. I mean, you know, shoreline zoning is there to protect wildlife scenery, the water resources. You know, so I don't want to start changing those. And I think, I think I shared that with everyone else. So what we have out of all of the Village Extension zone, that's what this outer, if you follow this all around, that's all our Village Extension. This area that I'm showing here, that was the area that I think Anita brought up at one point last time about a subdivision that was not built out. Is that still a subdivision? That is not still a subdivision. If you look at it, the road still shows, but it is all combined into one lot on this, this, this map. So these are the lots, the areas that, that, that would benefit from, and not all of them from reducing or could potentially reduce their lot size from 40,000 to 20,000. Keep in mind setbacks, pretty setbacks will still need to be met. If someone's house is in the middle of their lot, it's possible they may not be able to split their lot in half as they have to meet setback requirements from any new property line that would be drawn. This also wouldn't, I'm gonna try to zoom in without going too fast. Whoa, sorry. I think everyone sees this subdivision here. You know, it's tamarack, right? That, you know, subdivisions have their own, just, you know, covenants, deed restrictions and lot size requirements that we are not party to. But those are part of the subdivision approval. We don't enforce those declaration of covenants and those restrictions, but those are, if they want to amend those subdivision, they do have to come to the board to amend them, but we don't enforce deed restrictions. Deed restrictions are lot size requirements. They may exceed what the minimum is in town, or they may have square footage requirements of how big a house has to be, those kinds of things. So this whole area, that's gonna be out, you know, because of the subdivision. So there's really not a ton of lots, if you look at this, that would benefit from this change. And again, not every single lot could benefit necessarily because we don't, didn't really look at it from where the house is. You know, how could they separate their lot? That's really not for the town to do. That's for, you know, if we do move forward on something like this, the property owner would have to get into and start doing on their own. And I excluded the, obviously, the shoreline zone. And that's what that area was orange. I, I think it only shows up when you zoom, zoom in close enough. Yeah. So if you look at these, there's not a ton of lots, like up in here where Malino comes into Hope Road, you know, there's four lots right there. But if you look at them, I think these two lots are in the same ownership. And I think the house sits kind of right in the middle. And then if you come down Malino, back over to Mountain, you've got some up in here off of Start Road on both sides of the road. And then some in here. And again, this is the subdivision tamarack, which probably can't do them. This is the mobile home park for people's benefit. I will tell you, this is a pretty neat thing about the mobile home park recently. About a year or so ago, the mobile home park became cooperative. They bought out the park owners. And now the, each mobile home lot owner has a stake in the park. It's a pretty innovative way to deal with housing affordability. They do that a lot around the country. And I, I were working up in Bangor, there are a handful of very large mobile home parks. And I felt bad for a lot of the park occupants often and wish they were owned by co-ops, where they had a stay, a say in what was happening. So that's where we are with the lots in the VE. I don't know if you have any questions or want to dive into it further. We can have a discussion. I mean, I don't want these meetings to go on forever, obviously. I don't think you guys do either. But if I, I do want to get some direction from you. You know, because again, I think it's important to, you know, have, start having these conversations. And at some point, I'd like to get into the more dense area in the core of town. If you want to move forward on something like this, we can move forward and try to start the process. It does not require a heck of a lot of notice to all the property owners, though I do sometimes think it may be warranted to give everyone notice that this is happening. Notice really has to happen when you're changing uses, like specific uses in a zone. If you're making things like adding an industrial use to a, a zone that doesn't allow industrial uses, then you need to notify every single property owner in that zone. But just sharing that with you, I don't know what you want to do. If you want to keep moving forward or keep just diving in. I can stop sharing my screen if that is, if it's having it up is annoying to folks. And then, I don't know. I know I see only some of you when we have this conversation, when I'm sharing my screen. So any thoughts? You want me to stop sharing or you want to talk about this map?
So maybe stop sharing, Jeremy, and we can bring it back if we need to refer to it.
There we go. Chair, do you want to lead the discussion?
I'd be happy to unmute. Yeah, I'd be happy to start it off. I, I think the maps are great. It's really helpful to see the affected properties, the lots that are, that are in, in consideration here. For my part, the last thing that you mentioned was just notice, and I agree with you, more notice is better. I'm, I'm one of those who encourages as much participation from people who are affected, whether positively or negatively, as, as possible. And again, I agree with you, there's really no negative effect to the lot owner individually, but it might be to their neighborhood, they might think it's a negative effect, you know, just having more houses. But I certainly think we should involve as many people as possible. And I do appreciate the effort to, to try to look for solutions to the housing problem. And, and I think this is a step possibly in the right direction, but I'm definitely interested to hear what the other board members have on this. So I'd just like to open it up for discussion for everybody. And we'll go from there.
Ethan, as Chair, as Chair, do you want to kind of just, you know, like, pick a person to talk and, and just so we kind of keep this going and, and, and manage the discussion a little bit? Do you mind?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do that. I'm looking for people interested in jumping in or raising hands. I don't, I don't know. Okay, Anita, you want to go?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay. Obviously, one impact of splitting lots would be requiring an additional septic leach field for the new lot. And that would require cutting of trees in order to clear the area for the septic field. I don't have the technical know-how to know, you know, how exactly that would be impacting the, the I, the square footage and that sort of thing. But but I do feel a bit of concern about, you know, losing, losing tree coverage because we're doing our best to make sure we don't lose too much of that due to the need to sequester carbon. And so I think a little technical input regarding the, the requirements for an additional leach field would be helpful.
And maybe I'll just, when people have questions, I can just chime in and try to answer them the best that I can, or comments. That's all right. So Anita, I mean, any, anyone that's putting in a septic system has to comply with state subsurface wastewater rules. And there's a process, the minimum is for those, it's the 20,000 square feet. That's where the state of Maine gets the minimum lot size requirement. And I would just say, you know, about the trees. You know, it's, not every single lot is fully covered with trees. We're not, we have not assessed this from that perspective at all. But on any, there's a lot of lots out there that, I mean, But on any, there's a lot of lots out there that, I mean, we don't have impervious surface coverage requirements. We don't have in our zoning ordinance. So I mean, if anyone wanted to come in and cut trees, they're going to cut trees. And the town can't regulate that and we don't regulate that. So I'm not sure. And I think if you look at the pattern of development and how Camden has developed, I mean, you look up into Pleasant Ridge subdivision. Subdivision owners and developers have certainly addressed, I think, your concern over time, because you look at Pleasant Ridge, you can't cut a certain, you know, there's a certain percentage of trees that can be cut, can be cut on specific lots. I frankly, and I appreciate your concern or your comments about carbon sequestration, you know, sequestering carbon. I frankly don't think, I, I don't know, it's, that's a real, that's a really challenging place to go, I think, when we start. I don't know, that, just the cutting of trees like that, I mean, because we're talking about a twenty thousand square foot house lot. You know, and people are allowed to have yards and those kinds of things. And I, I'm not sure it's the town's place to start going down that road. That's you guys. And if the town wants to do that and address that kind of comp plan, which we don't address yet. So, you know, we can start looking at those kinds of things. But to start regulating or restricting people from doing certain things because of that, when we don't identify those things as goals or needs in our comp plan is kind of a little concerning. But Ethan Shaw is, he bounced himself from the meeting. There he is. Now he leaves, there's the chair. So Anita, that's just my comment. I mean, and I appreciate the carbon, sequestering carbon. But, you know, again, I, I'll let that go.
What, what do you say? Sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, one of, one of the things that this actually can enable is that by reducing the size of the building lot, you can have sort of, you can, it, it facilitates cluster development in this, in this part of town where the houses can actually be closer together in a development and allow more green space, more trees in a, you know, you have a five, six acre lot that you want to develop instead of having the houses all spread out, this can, which, and there's a lot of trends towards that in communities specifically for carbon, but also just aesthetics, that the idea of taking a field and everything, you know, a four acre field and putting three houses spread out. Is, you know, people, there's a lot of moving away from that. So this can actually be used to facilitate. And, and I think some of the lots you're talking about already are, as Jeremy said, are already fairly, you know, they're built out. They have a house already. They have a lawn. There's not a lot of tree clearing that would happen.
Yeah, I will, I will say, Chris, oh, thanks for the comment about kind of open space development or kind of that kind of thing. We do have a provision in our zoning, and this is at some point, we're going to, we should dive into this as part of this conversation. Because we have this, you can do these kind of open space developments that the intent is to preserve larger chunks of land. And, but we have a large lots, minimum lot size requirement. That is for those zoning, those specific subdivisions
Right.
and developments that is in so large, I think it's three acres per building. I mean, that's, that's not the type of development that I think it was intended to do, to promote, but, all right. You guys keep going. Ethan, do I have to admit him? Ask to unmute.
He's here, he's just not on video.
Oh gosh, I didn't realize. Yeah, I got, I booted myself in the meeting. That was my first act as chair.
Just wanted to avoid the
Just like, I'm out. That's all done. Yeah, so Anita, I saw you had your hand up. Does anybody else not have a chance to speak yet? Wants to chime in? Okay, Anita, go ahead.
The question is, I think Jeremy, you mentioned that in statewide, the minimum lot for an unsued lot, minimum lot size for an unsued lot is twenty thousand feet. And we're, and right now we're at forty thousand. Am I correct in understanding that?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just basically wanting to bring this zone in line with the state requirements, minimum requirement.
Correct. And I mean, this is again, this is my thought. And there's a lot of, I think Ethan's point about getting public input is important. And when I look at timing to get to June ballot, I'm not sure that this is a large, a long enough community discussion or awareness, just thinking about Ethan's comment. But yes, and this would only be for the village extension only, not the RU1, RU2, or the CR.
Is there a particular reason you're looking at this zone? Or is there some precipitating factor that had you address yourself to this zone and this, this issue in this zone?
I think it's really about, if you look at in the zoning ordinance and the zoning map on, on what the, kind of the, the purpose of the village extension is and what the purpose of the rural RU1 and RU2 and the CR, they're different. And I think everyone, if you look at the town, how it's developed over time, it's developed along the river and along, along the ocean and, and along the coast. So if you follow it up, I mean, we've got village, half of the village extension is already sewed. I mean, it's the more developed part of the rural part of Camden, if you will.
Yeah.
That's why. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare touch the RU1 or the RU2 or the certain parts, certain parts of the CR. Because the CR is a whole nother discussion we have to have at some point.
Okay, I think I saw Matt wanting to speak and then Jeremy.
I think Mark was up first.
I mean, I meant Mark, right? Mark, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to speak as a, as a resident of the village extension zone and who considered moving into the village zone. And I've decided not to move into the village zone, zone because the village extension is a pretty special area. And the residents here, I mean, there's, everybody has space. And my lot is forty thousand square feet and I wish I had more. And if, if I could buy a budding property, I would. But so I, I, I think the, the residents in this zone, they value their space. And personally, I'd like to see that protected. To address Anita's concern about the cutting of trees, most of this zone butts the state park. So I, I think cutting trees for septic systems is fairly a minute issue. So those are two opposing opinions, but.
Yeah, and Mark, I just have a question for you. What are the, what if the, I'm just wondering if it's a consideration that I, I hear you on valuing space, but what if you had a neighboring property and they were willing to carve off twenty acre or twenty thousand square feet to sell to you off of their lot? I mean, is that a possibility?
Well, yeah, sure, that'd be, I appreciate that, but you know, I mean, the fact is, I mean, I can walk to town, but there's enough space here where I can also sit at my dining room table and shoot a deer out the back door. Not that I have, but that's, that's what makes this neighborhood special. You know, my backyard is, is full of deer. And if we start, start building up, that, that, it's not going to be the case anymore.
I think those deers will get fatter. Because they're going to be all those geraniums and things.
Mark does have some nice flower beds.
Before, before Chris, oh, can I just, I want to loop back to, I think it's important to look at. And I totally appreciate what Mark's saying, and I was just kind of getting back to the purpose of the zoning districts. I mean, this is something that we, is in the front of each district. You know, and it talks about, like, if you look at the RU2, it talks about large, large lots, not sewed, not water. And I think it's just important in that I, I, so I think this is a good discussion because what I'm feeling is, is that we're not moving this forward for June. And I think it requires more discussion and more public input. That's just listening to you folks. But I think it's important to look at the purpose of districts. And, you know, if you read the village extension district, I totally, I totally, I value and appreciate everything Mark's saying. I think it's important again to read those because it talks about this village extension lies outside the traditional village, but includes lands that have or can reasonably be expected to receive within the next 10 years, public water and sewer can be readily provided with municipal services and can support significant share of new development anticipated in the town during the next 10 to 15 years. The purpose of the districts to provide a range of housing opportunities and of compatible, smaller scale economic opportunities. The intended to do so within a setting that emulates the character of the villages, of villages with streets designed for safe and convenient use by both pedestrians and motor vehicles and at a scale appropriate for walkable neighborhoods, a mix of activities that serve some of the routine needs of neighborhood residents and a sense of security and protective investments. So that's what the purpose of the village extension is. And I, I see in that, especially the, the end, I see what Mark's talking about. And I see what I'm trying to look at for the town. And again, wonderful thing about town government is it goes through these kinds of process. It goes through like discussion and public hearings, goes to the select board and they're not the, you know, the lawmakers. The people are, and it goes to voters. So having a robust discussion about these things is important and good.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And I would just also say that someone like Mark, whose lot is larger, is not being forced to divide it. So the, the biggest concern is maybe someone building closer to the boundary that he has. If, if, if a neighbor were to subdivide or split their lot, but his lot isn't going to necessarily be shrunk. But Chris, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, well, I was going to say much the same as what you just said of, you know, these don't, it doesn't in, it doesn't require breaking up lots. And the other piece, just of what you said is with the setbacks being the same, you know, a lot of these lots, as Jeremy said earlier, a lot of the lots in the VE won't actually be applicable because of where the existing house is and setbacks. So it's not like every lot in that zone is suddenly going to get split and have two or three houses built on it. It's really a few, but it just gives some options where it's applicable, where, where it works.
Well, and, and where it would work is Start Road. There, there are a few lots there. And then there's
I'm going to share my screen again.
Then there's a lot which is right behind my house, which would become a development of twenty thousand square foot lots and.
Where are you, Mark? Here?
Uh, no, down.
Here?
Right, nope, right there. See that, that lot that goes right up next to the subdivision.
Trying to zoom in and for some reason I can't zoom in on that one right now.
I like the interactive nature of your map, though.
Yeah, I mean, I will say, like, I can probably get Letizia to, to really
There you go.
Um, you're here.
See that lot right there?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what that would become is a
This is you?
Uh, yes.
There, okay, that's you. So you're right next to Tamarack?
Yes.
And, and this, is this part of the original lot of this, Mark? Do you remember or recall?
It was a separate lot.
Separate lot, not reviewed as part of the subdivision Tamarack?
No.
Hey Jeremy, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So all of the streets that are in white, those lot sizes are less than forty thousand feet. Is that the case?
Down here?
Yeah.
Like this would all be sewed?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I don't have, I'm not sure the sewer overlay, I can layer that, let me see.
Okay, but so that they're outside the scope of this discussion, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so sewer kind of comes all the way out here. And then where this, where's the sewer go? Here, up into here sewer goes. Yeah, so it's really, it's really all this. And again, I didn't want to go into the shoreline zone at all, like there would be some lots that can be, could be potentially. I didn't want to touch that. I, I don't think we should. And I could probably get Letizia to kind of maybe more find, like, look at where houses are and things. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it's important from a planning perspective to use your zoning ordinance and your comp plan to move your community forward. And I mean, that, that it's been done, like the, there's a reason the zoning ordinance says what it says, and I appreciate. And I say that, it says the minimum requirement is, is X, and the towns have this discussion. Right? If you think about it, right, we've already talked about what the minimum lot size in the village extension non-sewered lot should be because that's what's in the ordinance. But we also say in the purpose, it's for these other, this kind of like this greater good of what the zoning, the, the district's for. And in our comp plan, you know, we talk about the need for workforce development, we talked about the need for housing. And so the only way to implement those kinds of needs or to like, make those, you know, fulfill those needs is to make some changes in your zoning ordinance and in your comp plan if needed. But those go, again, go through public hearings and go through discussions. And that's, and I'm glad this is kind of where we ended up because it's clear from you guys, just the conversation that should, we really be having this conversation and it should be robust and not hurried.
Right, and I, I think that's great. And I, I think, I think you have grasped sort of the, the feeling. I don't want to speak for everybody of the board, but you know, the, the idea of like, you know, density of housing is important. And some people see that as, you know, making smaller lots available. And other people see it as, well, build, you know, something more dense in, in the village itself. You know, using something like what, what goes on at Knox Mill or something like that as an example and what's potential over at Tannery Park, you know, to actually put some, some dense, dense housing as opposed to, you know, the splitting of lots. Because in the end, you're talking about probably adding, I mean, I'm just spitballing here, you know, twenty, twenty lots.
I was going to say twenty or thirty maybe.
Yeah, you know, and, and, you know, to Mark's point, you know, he has his property, it butts on a property that could easily be turned into a subdivision of smaller lots, which is going to put, you know, smaller, you know, more houses next to him. But it is a little bit of the not in my backyard aspect, right? You know, it's, it's a good idea for Camden to have, you know, smaller lot sizes, but maybe not next to me. And so we all have to look at that, you know, from a perspective on the planning board is, as if, you know, what is best for the town. And, but his perspective as a landowner nearby is really important. And that's what we're going to probably see when we, you know, when we do put this out with notice. And that's, and that's where I go back to is the notice to the landowners being critical and have a discussion. I'm not worried about, I'm not saying one way or the other that we can or can't do this by June, but I do think we need to, if we want to get the, the public comment, we need to get that moving quickly and, you know, see where it goes. You know, I haven't made up my mind one way or another for sure on this, but I appreciate the, what I would say, the ingenuity of trying to look for options.
I, I will say, just so you know, like, we would have to have things through the process. The select, we would have to have a recommendation to the select board on March 23rd.
Yeah, that, that seems pretty hard to do.
It's going to be hard to do and I don't want to rush it. And I, to rush it for the potential of twenty, maybe thirty house lots.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend that at all. Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, maybe we can just kind of continue this discussion a little bit and then we can focus on maybe trying to gather some more public input and get this out there a little more.
Yeah, I see Anita has her hand up. So Anita, you want to go ahead?
I just want to say that I appreciate Jeremy's creative thinking with regard to how to resolve the issue of further development in Camden. I don't, my, my questions should not be read as saying that I'm against this. Should not be read as saying that I'm against this. I think it definitely is, is worth looking at and appreciate his. His creativity and looking at the state. Requirements and seeing what options are out there. I, I'm, you know, when there's additional. When we're looking at additional development in Camden, I like the idea of keeping it as close to town, as close to the core services as possible. This is further out. Maybe there's a plan for sewer eventually in this area, but nevertheless. I think it's a sensible option to be considering.
Thank you, Anita. I agree with you on that. And, and also, uh, just so you know, we worked with Jeremy for a while. He's pretty thick skinned. He takes, he takes our comments and rolls with them. So, um, but yeah, we definitely, you know, feel free to speak your, your mind and, um, and, uh, you know. We will roll with what, what we have. And, and I see Matt has his hand up now.
Well, just circling back, Ethan, if you'd be so kind. Um, Jeremy, there was some question about what the town's overall plan was for. Laying sewer into this, into some of these regions. And I still don't get a sense of that. And I think that would be an important aspect before we would bring this to the public. If the plan is to have no implementation of sewers to any of these regions, that's one discussion. If there is something out there that we're not aware of, there's some low hanging fruit. Any insight into again, what the, what the town is thinking about in terms of these?
I, I don't have a whole lot in, I mean, I, I can get it for you. And maybe what I can do the next couple, next time we have discussion. Is maybe have Dave Bolstridge in town to, to just come in for, you know, 10 minutes and just talk about the sewer system. Where it is, the capacity of the sewer system, we're building a new sewer plant. I did, um, and I asked this question and he gave me an answer and I have, I don't remember it off the top of my head. Um, about, you know, how much more capacity does the new sit, new plant have for us? Um, and there is some fair amount of capacity. So. But I don't know what that is and what, what's feasible, what's, what it costs like, where it could go. You know, blasting through ledge to bring sewer and water is very different than going through, um. You know, native soil to bring sewer and water. Um, so it's a very different thing. So I can certainly, as part of this discussion, I'll have. I'll, I'll grab Dave Bolstridge, the wastewater treatment plant operator and.
So.
Man.
So I, I, I could speak to that a little bit as a resident, knowing. What, what I was told to expect is there's no real, no real. Plan to come out here and ledge is the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark and Jeremy, I think that would be certainly part as we move forward with our discussion, just to make that, once we get that solidified, say, okay, there is no plan. Again, just don't hold me to that. And here is what we're proposing in. Given that context, that there is no plan to develop sewer out there. Here are, and here, and Ethan, to your point. You know, we'll, we'll get a lot count, you know, it is 25 lots. I think it would be important, the maps, Jeremy, were tremendously helpful. I mean, my friends who live in the, the shoreline zone were freaking. They were just like, what? I was like, no. So again, that type of homework. And advanced billing would be really helpful in terms of marketing PR, if as a group we decide to move forward. To clearly identify that it is not the shoreline zone. And Ethan, to your point, that is really impacting. Let's just make a number for right now for our sake, uh, 20 to 25 properties that would be eligible for division. Um, Anita, we don't address the carbon. That's the, the one that I, I don't have any comment on, but I hope that.
Thanks, Matt, for your comments. And, and I will also state that if we're talking those sewer and ledge is an issue. Then citing of septic systems is probably not something we're going to, you know, delve into, but that can make some of these lots unfeasible as well.
It's not just rock, it's also, it's also wet.
Right, it's wet and there's rock and you get right up against the mountain ledge and everything. So, you know, it may even be less than what we even, you know, anticipate. But it is important to, the, the closer we can get to some sort of number of viable lots. The better, I think, for this long-term discussion. And I, and I will say, based on the schedule, Jeremy, that you, you mentioned, uh, my personal opinion is that, uh. Running for June is, is probably accelerating this way too fast.
Is that the consensus of the board? Yeah.
I mean, we could take a vote on it if we'd like, but I mean, it's not a formal vote, but it's, I haven't heard any opposing view, but.
No, I just. Yeah, go ahead.
It doesn't seem like there's a need to rush. This question just to get it in for June. I mean, it's. You know, if, if there was an urgent desire for people knocking down doors saying, man, I wish those lots were smaller. I would be one thing, but.
Well, I will say there is, there is the occasional knock on the door. I mean, that, that is happening, but.
And, and piggybacking on, on Anita's comments, um, my preference is. And then also it squares with some of what Marcus said, um, my preference is for higher density closer to town. Um, if we can start to find, and I know that's a really tough issue, but if we can start to identify places, properties, et cetera, that. Would, would, would really do high density housing that's affordable. That's really what I think the town needs. I'm not sure. That, um, building lots of 20,000, of 20,000 square feet. Where you can put up 400,000, you know, dollar homes and then building costs and everything else is really the biggest need. It's really where people can rent an apartment for under, under $1,500 a month. Um, and still afford to live in town and work in town, you know, in certain industries or whatever. So. You know, when we get to the larger issue of, of, of affordable housing. That's where I would like to see some of our focus go to is looking at those, that higher density housing right in town. And making that affordable.
I, I appreciate that. If that's the direction you guys want me to go, um, you, you tell me that, um, and, and I'll go. Down that road rather than, we can keep this burning out there and, and keep this discussion moving. But if you want me to focus more on that, I, I can certainly spend some time doing that. I mean, I, there's no question that that's, that fixes. There were, that could address the issue, um, much better than, again, if we're talking 25 house lots. 25 house lots, houses that are again, 400,000 or 500,000. I mean, it's, it's expensive to build a house now, you know, it will. $300 a square foot, I gotta believe it's. Pushing higher now with construction costs, so.
Yep, yeah.
You know.
Well, that's, that, I think that's a very good point that Ethan brings up is that.
Understood.
That's where these houses will be in the $400,000 range. I mean.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're not going to be affordable.
No, they're not. That's. You guys want me to put this to bed for a little while and start going, we should start tackling, um, kind of looking at density in other areas a little more?
And I would also invite Jeremy, now as you and I've discussed, you know, examination of the Tannery project, not to let that, um, if people aren't. Paying attention to that, to definitely look at the RFPs. In consideration, Ethan, of this context.
Yeah, I totally agree.
You know, that where an RFP says, let's just make it a park, like. Maybe we should be more serious and proactive in terms of how we want to, um, address the, the Tannery.
Thank you for that. I, I will say, and. Larger, how, of the four proposals that, um, since we're, this conversation kind of just goes. Of the proposals, the, um, the housing project will require some zoning amendments. So, you know, those are things that we're going to have to, if, if that moves. Depending on what the town is, um, we may have to work on some of those things.
And, and again, I think that might be more in keeping with Ethan with what you're discussing in terms of density, need as well. You know, really focusing our attention and our energies on. There it is, in town.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's true. And, and, you know, I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse, but we did talk about the, the Tibbetts properties on Coalcore, which are industrially zoned. If we went to a mixed use with a residential and business use over there. You know, we've got one project already approved, but there's two lots remaining, plus the lots on the other side, which I think are now vacant. You know, or the, the, not vacant, but the properties are no longer occupied. Um, I think there's some, you know, I, I understand the need for industrial. I don't see that Camden is, um. Getting this big draw of industrial uses. Where we're, we're, we're not recruiting the next Google workshop, you know, over there. It seems like those are properties that are, that are up for, that are up for consideration as well as far as, um, getting some high density housing in the area.
Thanks for that, Ethan. And Chris, so then I'm sorry, um, but in that area, you're exactly right. I, I do think. You know, I had chatted with, um, folks about it a lot and, you know, I heard, well, we can't, we can't get rid of our industrial zone. But I think we can be creative in our industrial zone, um, and not. Live work. Um, there's a provision in the. Oh, to allow live work, um, buildings, um, which are industrial in nature, that have dwelling units as a part of them. It's sewed, it's watered, um, you know.
It'd be great to have a, an, an artist con, a community there or something, you know, something, anything, whatever, you know.
All right, so I'll, I'll keep looking at that. And I think Mark said it the last time, we can't, um. You know, and it goes along the lines of, of, is Camden really, I mean, are we going to get industrial development in that area of town? Um, or in Camden? And I think you got to look at, and that's kind of why I said earlier about. Housing and, and workforce and jobs and economic development in the, it's the region. Um, and what, what's supported in the region and, um. You know, we can't just do this in a silo and we kind of have to look at holistically at what's happening around us. Um, and where the commercial and industrial development is and really what kind of community we are. So I, I appreciate that. Chris, though, maybe you go. I'm sorry to jump in and then.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean. It, to me, it's, it's a bit of, I, I don't think we should. Table this concept because I think this is part of. The more holistically, you know, a broader approach. And like, you say, okay, you know, these are not necessarily going to be affordable, you know. Know a 20,000 acre lot with, you know, maybe it's, you know. You say it's a $400,000, $500,000 house. Well, you know, people are building smaller houses. So I'm not saying this, that these lots would be in the affordable housing category. But we're seeing a shortage of housing of all kinds. So if you take that. Middle upper peak pressure off, that enables more affordable spots to be developed. So I, I think we. I wouldn't say, oh, let's stop talking about this because it's. Again, it's a comprehensive look at all of the. Solutions. And, and making it possible. For these to.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So I, I, I agree with Chris on that. It's not, not. Table this and just do away with it. Just, it's, I think it, it, it deserves more discussion. And, and it's part, part of a, an overall approach. And I think Anita had her hand up.
Thank you, Ethan. I just wanted to ask Jeremy to give us a read. On what kinds of pressures come into his office with regard to housing needs in Camden. Are, are you aware of particular pressures? Of types of housing and that sort of thing? What, what comes in?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of all over the place. I mean, I think Chris O' kind of got to it, um, a little bit is. There's a need for all types of housing. I mean, there's not a need for, I'm sure from an assessment perspective and tax perspective, sure. Um, we'll take more 11,000 square foot homes on the ocean. From a tax perspective, um, there is one being built now on the ocean that's 11,000 square feet. But we also need those 2,000 square foot homes, those 1,800 square foot homes. Um, we don't have a lot of those. So I think, you know, it's, it's all of it. Anita, I mean, certainly workforce housing and you, you know, folks in the. You know, in, in the workforce that we need, um, that I'm hearing from businesses downtown that we need. You know, we're not. You know, we can't be a community of owner occupied homes, of solely owner occupied homes. You know, so there's a need for multifamily. There's no question that there's a need for that. And there's a need for. Those homes that are in the 300,000 to 400,000 dollar range, frankly, I mean.
Right. And I, I always think of like, I always think of it like a perspective of like. Can a police officer or a fireman afford to live in Camden? You know, I mean, that, that seems like, you know. Or teacher, 100%, love that. Yeah, any town employee. Development director. There's so many different positions though, that we're, you know. Being able to, uh, afford and live and work in the town that you serve. That's one thing. And it's another thing, you know, for, if you want to say just rental spaces for. Uh, servers in restaurants, um, that serve our, 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 our service industry, you know, or working in hotels and things like that, like other apartments available. Yeah, and that, that's, I think there's a lot in that range that can be done. And I'm not sure exactly how, it's definitely, there's no easy fixes. But I'm really sensitive to that, that, that lower end where we have so many, uh, service workers and stuff who can't afford to live in Camden. And, um, you know, or, you know, and, and should be able to at some point, in some way. And what, what we can do.
Yeah, they keep our economy going.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anybody's looked at rental, you know, housing prices anytime in the last, you know, year. But try to find a one bedroom apartment for under $1,200.
I'm just trying to find a rent, a vacant rental.
A vacant rental.
Right at all, but yeah, but I mean, even, even still, so, you know, so I think that's, that's the, that lower end pressure is where I look at it most. But I, I, I agree with Chris that this should not be a. One, you know, uh, uh, one and done, like just one shot deal. We should look at all approaches and, and your, your efforts on this are appreciated.
Perfect. Andy, you got some?
That, that brings up a whole nother topic, Ethan, about affordable housing, you know, and. Taxes are a big factor. And for, for rental properties, you know, that's what you look at is. You know, the renters, renters feel. You know, taxes are not an issue, but it's built in. I mean, that's, that's why rent keeps climbing is their taxes and. School budget has a whole lot to do with it when it's, what is it, 60? 66% of our tax base?
Yeah, and, and we could get into a, a long, I, I, I absolutely hear you. And I'm still, I pay taxes. We, we all know that taxes have been going up. The, uh, the, I, the, the, the biggest problem really comes down to a state level with a, in my opinion. I'm going to say that's not an official board position, that the state is not properly funding. The, uh, the education system as they're supposed to do. And so we as a town are, are forced to bear that. And that's what's going on. And, and you're right, that's what's causing the spike in the taxes. For sure. Um, and that, that cost is borne, uh, by the landlords and then passed down. And so, um, you know, that, that's definitely part of the, the equation and, and part of the problem. But it is, when we get to, um, the idea of more condensed housing, high density housing. I think you get away a little bit from the tax issue and into what's, what's affordable and, and what's available. And I think that's, you know, that, that's where I keep pushing my, uh, my, my efforts. Um, but I don't think we should. Just completely table Jeremy's efforts on this one. Anita, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, actually, uh, Genie Hollingsworth just made the point that I wanted to make, and that is. And I'm not familiar with the present status of. What the, the plant, the planning board has been doing with regard to auxiliary dwellings and apartments on. Private properties, but, uh, I think that is an important area to look at carefully. And a way to broaden, uh, opportunities for rental, um, within the town, the closer to town, the better. But.
I'm gonna jump in on that one and I'm gonna ask Anita if she voted, um, was it last June? She must have voted because I imagine voted for the accessory dwelling units that we, um, approved, the board went through in the hearing process. So. We, we definitely opened up last year, the availability to do accessory apartments on more lots in town. Changed the requirements. Lived where and all that kind of stuff. So I think we, we definitely made a good, um. Some good progress on accessory dwelling units. And I see that as the initial step. That's oftentimes what towns do, municipalities do on trying to get more housing is do these smaller units. And we've had a handful of those already permitted in our office since then, so.
Yeah, and I think that was, that was a great initiative and great strides. Andy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, say, I agree with Chris's remarks. I moved here in 2018. And even back then, trying to find like a three bedroom house. In Camden was very difficult, you know, inventory was very limited. And I think that's now been exacerbated by COVID and people trying to get out of the city. So. Adding more inventory, you know, across the board, I think our opportunities across the board is just going to help. You know, relieve, uh, the pressure across, you know, all the different needs. So, yeah, I would agree with that. But keeping that, you know, VE discussion open as well as looking at other opportunities, so.
As Jeremy well knows, part of that discussion relates to setback issues in town. Which is a whole nother area of discussion.
Yes, and I, I think what we should do is maybe I'm going to make a couple of comments and then let's move on from here because I think I got some good direction from you guys. Um.
I like that.
Setbacks is a whole nother thing that we should definitely look at. I think, you know, we oftentimes have these, especially in town. Out of town, the setbacks work fine, right? But in, on where we have a developed area, existing developed area, and we have setbacks oftentimes that are very restrictive.
Right.
And we should, we should really look at that. So I'll look at that. I'll look at everything you talked about. I looked at, um, also the open space um, development piece, um, where you want to do cluster development. We, we don't have a cluster, um, development piece in our ordinance. We have these open space developments, which are great. And the idea is to, um, have a large track of land and put your development in, in a certain area, but we have a minimum lot size for those of, I think it's three acres per dwelling. And you're trying to increase, um, you know, density. And all of a sudden you're saying, you know, for if I want to bring in 30, 30 units and do a open space development on 100 acres, but I wa, I've got 30 units, um, you know, think about 30, 30 units times three acres a piece. I mean, it's crazy. Um, that's, I don't think that was the intent unless the intent was to really, really.
Restrict that.
Up, tie up the rural area of Camden, so you're not going to get anything. And I, I'm, well, that might've been the intent. Um, wait when, but that should not be the intent in my opinion. The old.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that apply to one of the proposals for the Sagamore Farm parcel? Where cluster development.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yep, yep. And then maybe I'll just touch base really quick. So we got the tannery and we've got Sagamore Farm. Sagamore Farm, I had a request for expressions of interest that was out. Um, I've gotten, uh, I, I've got two or three proposals or requests or expressions of interest, if you will, for Sagamore Farm. Two of those are housing projects. Tannery, RFP went out. Um, I know one, two, you could say two of the four are housing projects habitat for, um, three house lots up front and, um, by themselves, three house lots up front, the town keep the back. Um, and then, then you had, uh, Northland, which is anywhere from 35 to 50 units on that site. Um, so though, there's some opportunity out there, um, but I'll continue to move forward and trying to do what I can to um, work on this issue. Sound good. Alright.
Sounds good. So, uh, I'm gonna, as my second move of chair after eliminating myself in the meeting, I'm gonna move on to the next topic. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna again pass the baton over to Jeremy. But according to our agenda, the next topic is, and here we go, is, uh, comprehensive plan.
No.
Oh, no, parking discussion, parking discussion.
And then we'll, and I'm going to keep this short and, and sweet unless you want to keep, keep talking about it, but.
No, we're gonna stop talking, I think. Everybody's ready to eat.
Perfect. Um, so I had, we had brought this, I brought this to the planning board a number of years ago when I first came to Camden about redo, removing the parking requirements um, in the.
Size of the, so can you back up a little bit?
Yes.
Please.
You want me to back up? Okay.
Okay.
Let's, okay, let me, let me see if I can back up. Um.
Thank you.
Zoning ordinance, uh, in our performance standards, anytime someone wants to do something with their property, and this is going back to the basics, anytime someone wants to do with their property, um, or build a house or build a business or a change of use, you have to have the minimum parking requirements, minimum parking spaces that are required in the performance standard section of the zoning ordinance. Um, and dwelling units say you need two parking spaces, an accessory apartment, you need one. There's a requirement for X number of parking spaces per four linear feet of bench space and a restaurant. There's park requirement of X number of parking spaces per square foot for office or retail. Um, those kinds of things. And that's how parking is regulated. Um, that works perfect, um, in a, in a society where we sprawl out and we continue sprawling and sprawling and sprawling and sprawling. If you look at development and this is a planning, planning thing. Um, if you look at how developments have happened as towns started zoning and making more zoning requirements, they started looking at parking and lot coverage and things. And then so they were requiring more and more parking for more and more uses. Next thing you know, you've got a lot that is, you know, 40,000 square feet and there's a 10,000 square foot building on it. And now you've got required our certain number of parking spaces and the minimum widths on travel lanes and those kinds of things. So all of a sudden you get very easily, you get like the strip development that you see in Rockland and in Bangor on Stillwater Avenue, where you, you know, you, you start, um, requiring much larger parking areas, um, oftentimes greatly exceeding what the demand of the use is. Um, and so in town, um, as people want to start redeveloping, reusing downtown buildings in like downtown cores, um, people have traditionally in downtowns, we relied on, on street parking or public parking if needed, um, and if available. Most communities are doing away with parking requirements in downtown, um, core downtown areas when they have parking facilities that are public parking spaces. They have X number of parking on, you know, on street parking. Um, the way I kind of like to look at it is, um, you know, if I'm coming downtown to Camden, I'm not just stopping at the coffee shop. I'm stopping it, stopping it. I'm going to go to the coffee shop. I'm going to go to a bookstore. I'm going to go to an art gallery. I'm going to go to the public landing. I may get on the, you know, it's the schooner, oh lad or whatever. Um, but I've spent my entire day in Camden, um, downtown. But I did not just go to one business. And so we tie in the downtown like everywhere else, we tie the use. Um, we require the specific use to have a certain number of spaces. Now, sometimes like I'm dealing with one now, um, a business downtown that's moving and this probably gives it away, but they're moving. It's a well established business in town. They do great. Give you a great product in the morning. Um, they're relocating and, um, they would like to do, have more seating than they have. Um, the seating, what I'm allowed to, what we can permit them is we've got to look at whether or not they have enough parking spaces. Well, you try to manage, um, and if you read a parking ordinance, it's a, it's fantastic reading. I would encourage every one of you to read it. Um, because you're going to go away scratching your head and saying, oh my gosh, who, who did this? Why did we do this? Why are there so many steps? Why is this, especially in downtown? Um, it's bizarre. Um, and it's not, it, it doesn't enable um, the community and property owners to be flexible, to be nimble, to be, you know, cater to a business that wants to come into their space. So this one business, they can't have more seats than they have right now. And I'm not doing this just for this instance. This is just kind of proves my point. Um, they can't have in their new space as many seats as they would like because they, there's not enough parking available for them to, to obtain. And obtain means they have to either have it on site. Well, we have lot line to lot line building. So the property doesn't have parking, so they've got to go find some parking somewhere else, which means go lease it from Camden Parking Company or someone else that has parking. Well, oftentimes those spaces are already leased up because we have had the system of doing this for decades where use and leases are tied to each other and the town's supposed to somehow track those leases that a use for a certain location has on a certain number of parking spaces. That is, it's not doable, um, frankly. Um, and it's just kind of, it's, it's sprawl thinking and not um, development thinking on what your community is in the downtown core. Again, because I'm not coming to one business. It's not like I'm going to Target. I am into a coffee shop. And again, I'm going to do something else. I'm going to do something else. And why should that coffee shop that wants to go into a certain location have to provide the parking for the re, that I just, I'm going to go after or the art gallery, I'm going to go or the schooner, oh lad.
Um, right. So Jeremy, I, I, I just want to jump in. I want to say thanks for that. Um.
That was the intro. You asked for it.
Yeah, you got, you got a deep intro, which is good though. I mean, I, I agree, I agree with the rant in general, but the other side of it, of course, is we don't want to turn into what Rockport has with their, with their issues around parking. And so there has to be some sort of balance with what we permit and allow. And then how much burden the public parking takes on and the street parking takes on. And so, um, I'm hopeful that's what you're getting to.
Well, um, yeah, and I'm, I'm of the, you know, I've lived in many urban places in my life and, um, you know, you and I've known people that have downtown apartments in Camden, um, and like downtown, downtown, and what they don't have a parking space. Um, and they manage parking downtown, living downtown. We all kind of manage when we go to downtowns. When I lived in Washington DC, you know, there's no place to park. Um, you figure out if I'm going to the bank or the doctor or a shop, it may take you five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes to find a parking space or 20 minutes. Um, you plan for it. And I'm just, I, I mean, I, it's hard for me to, um, I'm just, again, on my soapbox, but me personally, when you're in a downtown core, you should not expect to find a parking space immediately at your location where you want to go. Um, and that's kind of the expectation that communities have, I think, especially in Maine. Um, and.
And how does your proposal change this?
Um, I would just remove, again, remove the parking requirement in the B1. Um, so no use, um, would, and again, I haven't drafted the formal language on it. But that if you're doing a change of use, um, or whatever, you, you do not need to requ, we do not require you to have onsite parking or have a parking lease.
And this is, this, this includes hotels and restaurants.
Well, yes, yes. Um, what I would do though, looking at it, I would not allow existing parking lots to go away so that what we end up having is complete, because I, I mean, I see if you do this, you could in theory find someone that says, oh, great. I've got this parking lot that now I'm going to fill with a building. Um, I don't want to reduce our parking that we have in town, but it would be for existing uses in existing buildings in the B1 um, that you don't need to provide parking for.
How many, how many private parking lots do we have that could go away?
Um, I think we have three pretty good sized ones in town.
And they, and they could just anytime right now just say we're done with parking.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I was saying those, this would only apply to those lots that have buildings and existing uses in them. So like you would not apply this to say the Camden Parking Lot Company that has the lots behind town office, uh, coming down Mechanic Street. Um, you would not be able to fill that with a building and say, I'm going to rely on on-street parking or public parking that's in the neighborhood. That's going to continue to be a parking lot. That, that would be my recommendation.
Hmm.
I, I mean, again, this is for, I'm not intending to try to jam something through or try to get something to voters in June. I think this is an important conversation that we should have. And we continue, you know, this, it continues to come up because I continue to find businesses that want to come into town, the downtown, and they say, uh, parking's a problem. I can't give me your parking requirements. And I say, I, I know. Um, I get it. And they, you know, again, I get to the, the fact that people come to town for many reasons. At the same time, they're not just coming to one location. I mean, that's the need downtown, but.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
What if we were able to look at this as, uh, like, how long a customer would stay? For instance, I mean, if you're talking about a coffee shop and a customer spends 30 minutes there, you know, they shouldn't really be required to have a parking spot. But when you have, when you have, uh, lodging or, or businesses that, that people are going to stay for an extended period of time, uh, they should have parking or they should, they should be providing parking.
Or, or even, I, I get that. And I, I really, that's probably the way to go, like, start looking at this. And I, this was just a discussion. I just bring this up as, as a conversation starter because I, I, I think you're right. Um, and I think we should look at parking in general because right now I think you got to provide parking within 500 feet of your location. Um, I think we should probably increase that a little bit.
Yeah. And, and I, and I do, I do agree with Mark that, that there is a distinction between a coffee shop and lodging. Um, if we're, if we're gonna have somebody taking a spot for, for 36 hours versus 30 minutes, that's a, that's a different thing. And I might want to think about that perspective of it. I think I saw Anita with her hand up.
Oh, thank you. Um, I am wondering, um, what the, I don't know whether you have any data on this or whether it would just be an impression, but um, it seems to me that there are a lot of parking lots that are presumably purchased or leased for a business that are not available for public parking. And we see a low occupancy of lots. Um, I'm thinking, for instance, the lot across from the Episcopal Church on, what's that road that just goes around the corner?
Yeah, no, I, I hear you on that one. I think that in this, that situation right now is COVID related strictly. Um, Camden National Bank, that's their parking lot. Um, and there are no, they, they have no employees. They have not had any employees.
Well, I mean, that, that's something I've noticed over the many years, that that lot is under.
That's not just an eleven year.
Huh.
Yeah, and, um, so it seems to me that the requirement, and this is just a gut feel with no way of getting the data, the requirement for these, um, specific lots that have to be leased, basically it ties up parking area that is underutilized, ends up being underutilized. And I would rather see the town acquire the lots like they did, um, behind the fire department and make them available to the public and do it that way.
Man, yeah, that's a, that's a difficult issue, but I agree that there's some benefit, obviously a much benefit to, uh, public parking. And, and anytime we have an opportunity to acquire that, that's definitely not within the purview of the planning board or the planning, the development director. It's more of a select board issue as far as purchasing lands, but it's certainly something Jeremy, you could recommend, I guess.
Well, keep in mind that we, we're, we just are in the process of purchasing 119 parking spaces or so.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that. Yeah. And so I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, it's not something that, that the planning board necessarily has a direct relation to.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I mean, I will say, um, this is from a, a development perspective. Some communities, what they have done is they have taken existing parking lots and worked with a developer to develop parking infrastructure. Um, as in parking garage. Um, and I can see that, um, I can see that at the public safety lot, frankly. Um, and very easily done and not a large building, uh, because you'd actually have two, um, two levels to it at that location. And you could actually do, get it done probably with the grades there of real, not a whole significant, it would not be a significant structure, massive, you know, massive structure. And you could come in, um, and not have the, um, you know, the ramp up to the second floor because you could come in on one floor. You could have two.
Come in off of a street level.
Um, come in on.
And you could potentially even go underground there for two levels.
I mean, uh, you know, years ago I'd, I'd applied for a job in Hanover, New Hampshire and, um, went there for an interview and it was remarkable. I wondered where all the parking was in Hanover, New Hampshire. And it's underground. Um, a lot of have underground parking in Hanover, New Hampshire.
That's my old stomping grounds, Jeremy.
Is it?
Yeah, I went to high school in Hanover, so.
Oh, neat. Yeah. Chris, Chris had a comment.
Well, I was just going to circle back to Mark's comments, um, about sort of distinguishing and, and looking at the ordinance, like, you know, lodging is its own category. So you'd say like, yeah, obviously hotels and inns in town are going to need to have their own air parking. But, you know, another component of this is that we're seeing people certainly younger generations using cars less and less. And the, I mean, you know, as, as Jeremy says, like the people who live in apartments in town have been dealing with, with not having designated parking close to their homes for years and dealing with parking vans and, and all of that. And so to say, and I'm just looking, you know, like the restaurant piece, it's one space for each four seats. So basically they have to have a table for each, uh, a parking space for each table. Uh, which, you know, and I think to, to Anita's point, you know, we also know certain businesses who have their parking spot in front of their business and it says for customers only. And you sort of think, look, I'm really going to be here for five minutes. Surely it's fine if I park there while I go next door. Um, you know, and then you have the summer component, which is always going to be a challenge in Camden. I mean, parking is never going to be easy. Um, but taking the onus off businesses. And when you look at how much empty real estate there is in downtown Camden and anybody who's coming in to do a build out of a business right now and says, oh, I've got to have that many. I've got to have that many parking spots for my business. That's gonna be a tough sell for a lot of people. And if we can make that easier.
It's. Good point. It's a tough sell. It's a tough sell to tell someone that I will tell you. I mean, it's like, ugh. Um, you know, we are, the town is trying to look at this holistically, I will say, and, and I, I'm willing to, I, I, I really appreciate the comments about lodging. Um, and so I can look at it kind of more, um, focused. Um, we are looking holistically at parking, um, and I know people may not want to hear it, but, um. You know, paid parking is a thing a lot of communities do. Um, it's working very well in Bar Harbor and it brought in, I think, one point two million dollars in the first year. In Bar Harbor, um, and that.
Oh, good. That could pay the planning board salary.
That could, um, go to. Structure improvements, Ethan. Uh, so I think, um, in, in infrastructure related, so I mean, those are good, um, down payments on. Parking structure, um, you know, they're not making more land. So those are good, those are good ways to get parking. Um, you know, built, um, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, we know.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think you're right in, insofar as reading the board, uh. Lodging may be a different issue than, than the rest of the businesses. And if, if there's a business that wants to move into a closed up shop downtown. I think we want to make sure that parking isn't a, a barrier to them opening shop. Um, I think that's important. Um, I see Anita and then Mark with their hands up.
Um, I think we had a, a wonderful opportunity that for, for reasons that I, uh, have not. Uh, been impressed of, it does not seem to be grasped and that is on the mechanic street corner lot. Um, to, to my mind should be a two-story lot. With entry and exit for the second story off of Washington Street. And entry and exit for the first story off of mechanic. I think a two-story lot there makes a heck of a lot of sense.
That's a great point. I will say my perspective, I, I thought of that and then what I actually think is the parking lot. Again, parking structure goes over the public safety lot and we do an infill, um, at that, at that parking lot on mechanic. Um, like build, I mean, perfect world, I think from a development perspective, you build those lots back. Um, and you build buildings there again. Um, I think that's what you do from a, again, from a planning perspective and it's not my recommendation, but. I think, um, there's not a lot of parking spaces over at that lot that you're talking to the one that we just redeveloped, we re.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of spaces. It's not a lot of, um, there's not a lot of footprint. So when you're looking at the size of a travel lane. Plus the, the, the number of spaces you can get in, um, it, you know, it, it eats into. Pretty quickly. So, and again, I just kept advocating for infill and more dense downtown. I think you build that lot up, um, with building. Um, and you build a parking lot or a parking deck or a parking structure, um, over by the, by the. Building. That's my, that's my view. Um.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that, Jeremy. Uh, Mark, do you want to go?
Sure. Uh, so I, I guess Jeremy, I would, I, I would say that. We ought to be looking at redrafting the parking ordinance rather than eliminating it.
Perfect. Good job.
Uh, I mean, the only, the only, the only thing more complicated than this parking ordinance is a sign ordinance.
Yeah, that's going to get redone too. Thank you, Mark. Perfect. Um, I, I take that as direction and maybe you want to move on to, um, comp plan stuff?
And Jeremy, before we move on, I sent you a quick email. Where, where's the reference for the parking ordinance? Is it's, I was looking in eight, section eight, article eight, section eight, but it's not there.
It's 10:30.
I sent it to you twice. I did.
Tell me, Mark.
Article 10.
Article 10.
Part two.
Part two.
First on 33.
No, no, so Mark, I'm going to go with you. Mark, where is it?
X 33.
Okay.
I'm, I'm having, I'm losing confidence in our vice chair.
He's, he's demonstrating his incompetence so that he can get out of the game.
That's what I'm talking about. It's like washing the dishes. I'm terrible at it.
Yeah.
I have a, a place to go. Maybe I'll go read. It'd be great.
Okay, so, uh, moving on then to, uh, Jeremy's suggestion, unless somebody has anything else?
Uh, I, I just generally say I support getting rid of the parking ordinance with the. Uh, consideration for, um, for lodging.
Okay, and I, I think that, that brings in Mark's claim or. About redrafting or the post eliminating, yeah.
There, there are a few other distinctions of businesses that I think should have, you know, doctors' offices and things like that that, that should have some. Parking component. So we want to just.
Yeah, there's no, I'll, I'll make one last comment and then I'll jump, we'll jump out of here. Um, there's no question about that, Chris. So, I mean, I dealt with that. Um, the new age of dentistry, um, is, 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 is challenging for land use planners across the country. Because what they're doing in dentistry now is you got one or two dentists and 15 hygienists. And a role. I mean, it's, it's just like this never-ending circle of people and the volume in dentists. And I, I'm not saying we have that problem in Camden. Uh, I've never seen it in Camden as a problem, but elsewhere, um, it's a real problem.
No, but we, I mean, I was thinking about the, um, the dental clinic that is, they're doing the renovations that's over by Quarry Hill. And you know, one of the things that they did to qualify their parking was the old driveway of the building that comes in off Route 1. And you know, by the time, exactly your point, by the time they staffed out the, and then left like two slots for patients, it's pretty tight.
Very tight, yeah. Fair. And I was not looking at this of kind of a whole listing and I can look at parking holistically, like outside of the downtown. I was trying to focus.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm. It just was in my head of that example.
Perfect. Thank you. Comp plan, um.
Yeah, Jeremy, you have the floor again.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm not sure if everyone, uh, reviewed the comp plan and I, I'm sorry on the agenda. I said 2015, that should be 2017 comp plan, right? Um, is that one of those? Yes, 2017. Sorry, on the agenda, it says 2015, um. So the comp plan is supposed to be the document that kind of guides the town. It looks at, um, if you look through it, um, it's on our website, but I also sent it to you. Um, it's a great document that looks at everything from. Goes through chapters, the history of town, the population and demographics, the economy, downtown, natural resources. Natural opportunities and constraints, sewer and water, solid waste, transportation, land use patterns, housing. The harbor, recreation, open space, historic resources, public facilities. Fiscal capacity, education, future land use, land use regulation, planning and community development, capital improvements, regional cooperation. Um, other vehicles for implementation, town government. And that's it. So it's kind of like the all encompassing document that really kind of supposed to guide what the town does. And we need to redo these every X number of years. We had one done in 2017. Um, and I think everyone, we commented on this or maybe Ethan did and I did, um. And this was the vision for the next decade in 2017 and it is not, it's. Scantly mentioned in here about climate change and sea level rise. And we're doing a lot of things to address that concern. We're feeling the impacts of sea level rise. Um, whether or not you agree with climate change, that it's happening or human induced, that is not the question. It's not what we're talking about. We're talking about how can our community be resilient to what's happening in the natural. You know, the natural world's changes, um, and they're changing. Storm events are in, we're having increased numbers of them, increased intensity of those storm events. Um, and we're seeing sea level rise happening, um, and it, it is happening. And so. We have a, a, a vulnerable harbor. We have vulnerable infrastructure. We have businesses that are vulnerable. Um, Lyman Morse for one, the hotel, you know, everyone down on the harbor is vulnerable. Um, and so there's a lot of things to look at and we don't have not addressed it in the comp plan. And what I'm hoping to do is to have, and I'm looking at other communities. Um, I had a Bowden intern work with me, um, this year and got me a bunch of information, gathered a bunch of information on what other communities are doing. Um, looking at York, looking at, at Booth Bay Harbor, um, Saco has done some good things. Um, really Southern Maine's done a lot because they have a very engaged regional planning commission. The Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission is a very active, um, organization and, and assists. The municipalities in Southern Maine, um, quite extensively on, on climate change and sea level rise. So what I'm hoping to do. Um, is to kind of just bring you up to speed on kind of where I am and where we are with this. Um, we're at the beginning stages. I have again, a Bowden intern that has worked for me on this issue a little bit. She's working some more on the sea level rise piece, um, and. And then I now have, um, an intern who's kind of working with me from. College of the Atlantic, um, through the watershed school, um, on some environmental issues and climate change and. Um, sea level rise is one of those things that she's going to be helping me with. Um, so that said, I just wanted to kind of go over what I envision. Um, and we can talk about it briefly. There's not much to talk about, I don't think at this point. If you want to, um, add to the, to the mix, I think it's, um, it, I, I will appreciate it. But really this is about resiliency planning and I think we need to have probably a chapter maybe on resiliency plant, resiliency planning in the comp plan. Um, and these are things that we would do and why, um. You know, kind of initially do a coastal and a riverine hazard study and we're kind of engaged in that already. Um, we're doing a lot of work on modeling of the McGunt cook river. I know people, we've talked about the river, um, dam removals, um, that's a separate discussion. But part of the discussion on sea level rise and climate change, um. And so we're doing that. We do have some data that watershed school put together on where sea level will be different, um. You know, um, ideas on where sea level will rise over time. We have watershed school did a report on that. Um, I have been working with again, this intern, um, to bring Pete Slavinsky into the town. He's, uh, with the state, he's, I think with the, um, Bureau of. Geology or something, um, with the state of Maine. He's a fantastic, he's a really, um, dynamic, um, smart, smart guy. On, on sea level rise and does some great things with communities and modeling. He's willing and interested to, to help us do some kind of more intense modeling than what, um, watershed did for us. Um, and look at what sea level rise scenarios will, what they're expected to play out to over time. And I think that's important to kind of start where we are so that we can characterize our vulnerabilities and our risks. Um, you know, that, um. You know, that we're being impacted by sea level rise, um, coastal flooding, riverine flooding, um. I'm just looking at some notes, sorry. Um, and then we would identify some opportunities, um, if you will. Hopefully you didn't hear my kids. They're going, going a little batty. Um. I kind of got lost track. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um. So we can again minimize flooding, minimize all those kinds of things, impact to property and infrastructure, um. Work to provide what I think is important too, especially in Camden, not only looking at public infrastructure, but looking at, um. Building specific infrastructure on private property is critically important to this, um. You know, providing technical info, um, if possible, and ranges of adaptation strategies that people can implement. Um, you know, when you look at, at sea level rise and climate change on coastal communities, you either armor yourself. Right? You're going to make yourself stronger or your building or your infrastructure stronger. Or you're going to adapt, um, and figure out a way to adapt with that sea level rise. Or you're going to retreat, um, and allow sea level rise to play out and, because it is. Um, but not can, you know, retreat your development back a little bit, understanding that sea level rise is going to happen. And so I think if we can figure out ways to provide building specific or at least lay out a path work. Or a pathway or ground, you know, groundwork on how people, how we can assist people with that building specific technical info is critically important. I see it, you know, you, you see it when you walk down on the, on the, the public landing, you take one step. One more step and you're on private property, uh, but we're all for the most part at the same elevation. So if the town. Working to dr- address our public infrastructure, make it more resilient. Um, we can build our infrastructure up, but then we're just, our neighbors are not. Um, so it's got to be a kind of a holistic approach. Again, that's a good word today. Um, and then what I think we need to look at in that context is looking at our floodplain ordinance and our shoreline, shoreline zoning ordinance. Um, as well as our zoning ordinance and height, and this came up at the Lyman Morse project. Um, they would have loved to have increased, um, gone higher. To adapt to sea level, be able to adapt more to sea level rise, but we have height restrictions that limit them from going taller. So you can't build your first floor up higher, um, if we have zoning restrictions that don't let you, don't facilitate what you're trying to do. Um, so we need to look at that and really start saying, okay, um, you know, at some point people. No one is deeded a view of the water unless it's in their deed. Um, no one has a right to a view unless it's in their deed. We do have zoning ordinance. Piece that talks about the view corridor, but that's from public property only. So I think we need to start. Really thinking about this big picture for what's best for Camden for the next hundred years, not for what's, um. Best for someone's view currently, and I, I hate to say it, I don't mean to sound, um. Non-sympathetic, but I, I am kind of, um, when it comes to that issue.
Yeah, and, and Jeremy, I'm really glad that this is coming up and, and you know, obviously you know, it's, it's my soapbox issue too. And I think we really need to look at this, as you said, on a comprehensive level. Um, obviously, uh, tonight is not going to solve the climate crisis, um. And depending on what people think or feel about climate change and, and human impact and everything else is irrelevant in my opinion. I think we need to be looking at the worst case scenarios, um, and getting more data on that is, is going to be helpful and instructive. You know, I think, so. Yeah, my personal two cents, but, um, you know, if anybody else in the board wants to just jump in, I, I think we can wrap this up pretty quick.
Can I, can I make one more last comment? And I think it's important because I think when, when we do this. If we can assess the applicability of the national flood insurance program and our flood ordinance. Um, while we do this, because when we start increasing that floor level, that first floor, finished floor elevation of a develop, of, of a property. If we say right now, we're only have to be one foot above base flood elevation. And these people are playing, paying flood insurance pre- premiums through the roof. Flood insurance has gone through the roof in the last five years. I, I, I mean exponentially through the roof. And if we can actually. Change our first floor elevation by saying you have to be two feet above base flood elevation or two and a half feet above base flo- flood elevation. With your first floor, then all of a sudden. The national flood insurance program is going to say, oh, this community recognizes that sea level, not, they won't recognize sea level rise as the issue. But they're going to say, they're going to re- try to reduce their impact on flood, on buildings by increasing beyond what the minimum is. And so what we'll see is we'll see insurance, flood insurance rates go down for those people in those locations. Um, and it's pretty drastic. It's the community rating system can tweak that, um, quite a bit, so.
Yeah.
Good.
I think that's good. Anita?
Here we go. Um. This, this is a very important issue, um, but folded in with that. Uh, with regard to the comprehensive plan is our need to incorporate the town's. Intentions with regard to energy use and, uh, sustainable energy production, which we are making great progress on. Um, but I don't believe that's, uh, incorporated into the comprehensive plan yet. And I'd like to see that also as part of this effort to bring the comprehensive plan up to date. Um, I'm wondering whether you're talking about actually adding an entire chapter to the comprehensive plan that would address. Uh, sea level rise, but would also address, um, energy adaptation, change, uh, improvements.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually Anita, that's, that's a great point. And I would note that the one place that it does appear is in the sort of a sustainability, energy conservation. Portion, but it is, as you, as you may or may not know, is a, a sub subsection. And that's where it appears. Um, Jeremy, I'll let you address how you, you intend to approach this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but it's going to, it's going to touch on more than one area of the comprehensive plan. And so in that, in that, in that sense, I don't want to limit us to just saying a new chapter. I think a new chapter might well be warranted. But also making sure that we touch on all the areas that it, that it impacts.
That's fair and I will, um, yeah, again, I don't want to, I mentioned earlier, I don't want to recreate the wheel on, on this. I'm going to look at, see how other communities have addressed it. I honestly, Anita, I have not seen a community address energy in their comp plan. I'm not saying that hasn't happened. I'll probably, it's probably down in York would be my guess has done it. But so I will, I would start digging and what I'll do is I'll, I'll gather some of these plans or these sections of plans and, and share them with you. I know I do have a bunch of them already and I'll just kind of put that into a more concise document and then share with you, and then we can just continue this discussion. This is not something that is going to go to voters in June, like just so you, comp plan amendments need to be approved by voters. They're, they're a 10 year document. Ours is 2017. So I think it was Jeff Senders who mentioned that you got to start doing this like five years before your comp plan is due. So we're, we're getting there, but I would like to try to get a comp plan amendment done to voters, hopefully for November. So I think we have some time and I'll, I'll, I'll start diving in a little more Anita. I'll get, I'll share a bunch of documents with you guys and maybe I guess that's it for now. I mean, I think.
Yeah, I'm going to just do a quick survey of the rest of the board. I agree with you on the November timeline. I think we can do something by then that should be doable. Anybody else on the board have anything they want to chime in or even Mark, is that your hand up back there or? Oh, you're just scratching your head. Okay. Matt, you're all set? Okay. Andy, anything you want to add?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. I see Chris O's giving the thumbs up and Anita, your hands up again?
Sorry to be such a pest. The town landing that you're talking about Jeremy and the issues related to that. I was wondering if you could briefly mention what the status of the plans for development of the town landing, redevelopment of the town landing as TY Lynn, I believe was the company that came up with that proposed plan. I just wonder if you could give us a sense of where that is now, especially with regard to the recognition that this, this issue you brought up, sea level change has to be addressed first.
Sure. First, maybe I'll blow up the TY Lynn report. How's that or plan? I mean, I hate to be frank about it, but they did not address sea level rise or climate change at all in that, in that report on the redo of the public landing. And it was a very 30,000 square, 30,000 foot view of how the town could redevelop the public landing. And I don't really think it gave a whole lot of credence to sea level rise and the impacts that we're facing. So I will use that as a document, as a guiding document, as a, something to informational only. I don't think it's in enough detail. Those are schematic drawings. And again, they didn't really address sea level rise. So it's unfortunate. But that's where that is. We are, you know, there's a lot of priorities in the town right now and there's not, sometimes not a lot of bandwidth or ability to do all of these things that we're trying to do at the same time. So I look to try to look to the town manager and more importantly, the select board for direction on, on what the priorities at the time are and obviously operating within the town's financial capabilities and, and to manage these things. So right now I think we're focused on, at least I'm focused on Tannery, Sagamore Farm, and then I think we'll be getting to the public landing in the not too distant future. I know Steve Pixley, I hear from Steve Pixley weekly, I think he wants to redo his building down at the Harbor Master Building and I get it.
What? That masterful building that he has there, that giant structure?
Well, it's in need of, it's in need of some, you know, improvements and we did have the wood report, we were fortunate that we were able to take advantage and sign on to the Department of Marine Resources had funded wood consulting to do a kind of a feasibility assessment of more of an assessment of our existing public infrastructure and how is impacted by sea level rise or is being impacted and what kind of improvements we need to make. They did a great, is a good report, very informative. I don't think it's in enough detail. And it's hard when they're trying to do, you know, they're doing these, they did these in like 12 different coastal communities. Probably not as enough focus on, on, it's kind of more of, I think, probably the 10,000 foot view as opposed to the TY Lynn, which is like the 80,000 foot view. But we need to get some more engineering done likely on what kind of infrastructure improvements we need. I mean, we've got a restroom facility down there. We've got, you know, the Harbor Master Building, we got public water, we got sewer. I mean, you, if on high tide days, when we're having a big storm event, I think probably everyone's seen some of Allison McKeller's videos. Or at least some of her documentation of the sea, the seawater in our storm system. Like up, up on land, that's seawater coming up through our storm drains. So I mean, it's clear we've got some issues to deal with and, and it's not going to be an easy one. It's not going to be a cheap fix, Anita. So gonna, you know, we're going to try to do this whole list.
I, I, I appreciate that and I appreciate the priority order that you're taking it in, but I do really feel it's important to have an ultimate plan in mind for the redevelopment of the town landing when the sea level is addressed at the town landing and not do it piecemeal. That's kind of what I feel like mechanic street parking lot was done, is done piecemeal. Let's, let's paint the wall. Let's, let's repave and, you know.
I hear you. I will say the wall, I'm just going to cut, the wall is not ours. That's, that's private property.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
That's why, that's why Steve, that's why Steve Pixley is not getting a new Harbor Master Building this year. As much as he wants a new Harbor Master Building, he's not going to get one because we're not going to invest that kind of an infrastructure money into something that we're not prepared to really fully build appropriately, keeping in mind sea level rise. So.
Poor, poor Steve. I'd like to recognize Matt, he's got his hand up.
No, and I'm going to bring it down Jeremy, from the 80,000, down from the 30,000 to the 11 foot level. So Anita, we just recently with Lyman Morse, this was a big issue that we were battling back and forth. And it broke down in terms of systemic major changes that changes to the ordinance for sure, but also changes to the strategic strategic slash comprehensive plan, that it has to be in a more systemic level, not Anita, to your point, not piecemeal. Because Ethan, I mean, you and I were both looking, kind of scratching our heads during the Lyman Morse discussion going, holy cow, you know, just bring that thing up. But we weren't in a position to in any way implement or suggest based on where we are. So again, back to Jeremy's point, looking at this in terms of ordinance change and looking at this in terms of comprehensive plan. My issue looking after the Lyman Morse was the amount of work involved. And then reviewing, so Jeremy, just one thing, just as a little asterisk. You know, when we look at climate change, you know, I was just going through the comprehensive plan right after Lyman Morse. And in theory, I mean, it really almost checks, you know, 75% of the chapters would be impacted by climate change.
Oh, yeah. Right. That was what I was getting at.
Yeah. Sorry, Ethan, what the scope and scale of this particular committee or board would be. Otherwise you're, you're looking at years of work.
Yeah. Well, we have, we do have a lot of say and input into this and with Jeremy's guidance, we can, we can hit all those. But you're right. I think we need to look at this as sort of an immediate approach. And then a five year plan, because I mean, the, the, the surprising and sad part is that in 2017, the comprehensive plan was drafted or finalized. And climate change, as Jeremy noted, was mentioned a mere, you know, seven times or six times, three times. I, I actually did a quick scan of it and I saw business climate more than climate change. And 2017 happens to be after the Paris Accord, pretty surprising. But it's not, not to criticize those who are working on it, but it does, it does in hindsight, look a little short sighted. And all we can do at this point is address those things that immediately are within our purview. And then also with the focus like Jeremy said, that, you know, the work we do now will be implemented or will be, you know, will bear fruit down the line as we renew the town, the actual comprehensive plan. But I agree, an amendment is an order and we should do as much as we can. And I will commit my resources to that. And I, I get the feeling that this is an important issue for most of the board members. So to the extent that we can, we should be committing as much time as we can to this.
Perfect. Good deal. All right.
Good close, Ethan.
Keep having this discussion going. Does that sound good?
That sounds good. And wanted to say thanks everybody for this.
One second.
You got one more. Then there's the most return. It's coming.
I wanted to know, I wanted to know when the chair gets the mute button for Jeremy.
Just, I'll make you, you can be this, run the meeting.
No, I don't want that. I don't want that.
All right.
Careful for what thou, thou wishes, Mr. Shaw.
So just following up for next meeting, February 18th. We may have, and I'm, I'm proud, we're probably going to have a first look at a proposed amendment in the CR, in a certain area of the CR. It's in the CR, but it would benefit certain buildings in the CR only. This is a more commercial piece up along the state park, up on the lake property. We have businesses and storage and some marine use going on up there. So that's that. We're going to have a prove a draft for a public hearing and this would be on tweaking the B, the village district that we discussed last time. The wastewater treatment lot, making, he sets the village, make that piece to be one. I already, just so you know, on that I did talk to the DEP because that has to get approved by DEP. DEP shoreline zoning guy had no issues with that. And he said, so, so that's moving forward. And that public hearing will be likely on March 18th. For that, that's right before the plan, this select board needs their recommendations. So that's where that is. We will likely also have an amendment to Pleasant Ridge subdivision again for board members that have been on here before. There's some vacant lots in there. And vacant lot owner would like to sell half of the lot to each a butter. So that has to get amended by you guys as a subdivision amendment. So in that case, we're not going smaller, we're going bigger on those lots.
Right, right. Which is, which is, which is the type of thing that could easily happen, right? So.
For sure.
Jeremy, can I, can I ask a quick question on the non agenda item? The Headstrom DEP, we walked out there a couple of months ago. Any updates on what, what happened with that property in terms of allowing him to move forward and in terms of DEP and other people approving? Cause weren't we waiting?
You obviously haven't gone down that way lately.
I, I haven't. No, no, I haven't walked with the dog down there. Have they full bore?
Full bore is done.
Oh shit. I'm sorry. We're being recorded. Oh gosh. Andy, sometimes we forget, we're being recorded.
This is a family program.
I know, I know. And then little old lady and the same woman in the Hannafords who says, you were the nice one. Okay.
For the kids.
All right. Jeremy, I take it I need to go for a walk with the dog.
Well, so he has not built his building yet.
Okay.
It's done the, remember he did some armoring of the shoreline of the bank. That's done. That's completed and they brought in Phil and they cleared the lot. Where the building's going, that's cleared. I was out there. I don't know, five times, just keeping an eye on them, holding the contractors to their feet to the fire.
In terms of erosion.
Yeah. I mean, that's my concern in that whole area. So it's well stabilized right now. I beat the drum on them about it because of snow. When snow was first coming, it was right when it started getting cold is when they were finishing. I said, you guys need to button up, you need to get out of here before it freezes and make sure it's, it's fully covered and it's, it's holding up and, and fine right now. So there, they have their permits. I've been out there. They don't have a permit yet to build. But they, they, it's where they are. So I'm good.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Matt for bringing up a non agenda item.
Sentences Jeremy on, on that, what is the Headstrom project? Is, is adding a building closer to the river?
Yeah. He's adding a building on his site, a storage, storage building.
And it's already been through, it's already been through planning board approval and everything else. So it's a done deal.
Yep.
Mark, did you have something else? Are you signing off there? Okay. So we're, we're wrapping up this meeting. I just wanted to. Chris, you have something, Chris O?
I was seconding.
Wrapping up the meeting. Yeah, we're trying, we're trying. I want to, I want to make a quick, I want to make a quick statement, you know, with all that we go through. I am appreciative and I'm sure the board is of all the work that Jeremy puts in. We're free to disagree with, with his perspective, but he does a lot of work and he has the best interest in, of the town in mind. And he brings to us all these important issues and I'm appreciative. And I just wanted to let you know, Jeremy, that I really do appreciate that. And I think that, you know, it leads to a lot of really good discussion for the town and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Chris O, motion to adjourn.
Second.
And, and, and then I hear some motions. I knew I, I outsourced my motion making. And so I hear two motions, all board members in favor of adjournment.
Aye.
You can vote too, Andy.
I can. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
It looks like it passes unanimously. So thanks everybody for your time and for your, your, your interest. And we'll reconvene in a couple of weeks.
Thanks Jeremy. Good night, everybody.
Thanks everyone. Have a good night.
Take care.
Janice, do I need to close the Zoom meeting before I shut off YouTube? Thanks Anita. Were you asking something?
No, I just apologize for, for not remembering that, that, that link is in the calendar. Cause I did, I did accept the meeting. I just forgot to check.
No problem. Have you run these meetings before on Zoom before?
What do you mean run them?
Like when you have an energy committee, do you manage the meeting and shut it down and all that?
Allison actually does that.
Okay. I'm asking, I gotta find a question. If I shut down our Zoom meeting or live on YouTube first.
Oh.
That's my. So people are listening, listening to our conversation on YouTube right now, but I'm going to try to get an answer. I just don't want to mess it up. Do you know if I shut down Zoom before I shut down YouTube, question mark? We'll just go with it.
Okay. Bye bye.
Bye. Be well.